You can have it go in and out, in and out.
Yeah, but I understand that you don't get it because I can't.
You'd have a lot of time, right?
They're on each speaker as they speak. You ready, Chief? Hold me, order, begin with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening, everyone, welcome. We'll go ahead and move on to the next item, which is to approve tonight's agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mary, second by Roy, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Move on to the approval of consent calendar, which is the minutes of the previous meeting and the payment of bills.
I move that.
Second.
Motion by Roy, second by Doug. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Brings us to the next point of business, which is to consider approval of resolution nineteen twenty-three, adopting Wadena County All-Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Uh, so last year, uh, Wadena County went through their planning process with Homeland Security Emergency Management and updated their, um, hazard mitigation plan. And, um, somehow we did not adopt it last spring, but we want to adopt it because it opens us up for funding for things like storm shelters that power late. So, here's a copy of it. Anybody wants to see it? I think it's largely the same as the previous version, which was, um, good for five years. But I would recommend that we adopt resolution nineteen twenty-three and adopt the Wadena County Hazard Mitigation Plan.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Doug and second by Blake. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carried.
Do we have to do one for Todd County too, or did we?
There, we, we did, uh, Todd County's back, well, five years, actually a little over that, um, ago now. Theirs actually is expired, uh, and not Todd County's fault. Uh, they have a, uh, pretty major backlog with funding and staffing of planning for hazard mitigation projects, so. Not, you know, not having a, a current plan does not impact, uh, storm funding, but, um, it does impact the hazard mitigation grant, uh, stuff that's out there. So we have the benefit of being in two counties. And we have a county with a current plan that talks about power late and that, so.
Move on to item number five, designate Staples World as the official newspaper.
We got a copy of a, uh, letter that we received from the Staples World, from, uh, Mark Anderson, managing editor. Um, and basically the legal notice and stuff is the same as it was last year per column inch. And would recommend moving forward with Staples World.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mary, second by John. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carried. Move on to item number six, consider adopting resolution nineteen twenty-four, designating official depositories.
Uh, page nine of your packet is resolution nineteen twenty-four with a paragraph with all sorts of financial institutions that, uh, we utilize for deposits. Recommend approval of that resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by John, second by Blake. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carried. Move on to item number seven, consider board commission and office appointments.
Uh, page ten in your packet, there's a memo, uh, from Tara with kind of a update on, um, board and commission appointments. You see all of down at the bottom of, of that, uh, first page and on the second page is basically, um, uh, full membership, a full roster of all of those boards. The top box are the, um, appointments that are expired, uh, that were requesting the council renew. Uh, would have Roy and Mary, uh, Public Works, Kent Norrell's term is up on Airport Board, uh, Janet Kylie on planning and zoning. We're still looking for a body, um, to serve on planning and zoning. If you know anybody that I think would, um, do well in that role. Uh, Janet Kylie, Board of Adjustment, Roy Miles, Board of Adjustment. Um, the next one with Chris is a change. Uh, Brian Neiman, uh, has been serving on Board of Adjustment for a lot of years. And I think he said by March or so, he won't be a resident of the city anymore when his house just across the road is done, um, so he won't be able to serve. But, um, Chris indicated that he would be willing to. Uh, tourism marketing, uh, Mary, intergovernmental relations, uh, John and Doug. They see that email, John and Doug. Um, and then, uh, President Protim, uh, has been Roy as the most senior serving member of the council. I don't know if anybody has any questions or wants to have discussion on any of those, but, uh, you know, other than the one seat on planning and zoning, we would have a full slate of, uh, board members for all of our committees.
I move the, uh, the appointments of everyone on their list.
Well, second.
Motion by Roy, second by John. Uh, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. All right, motion carried. Move on to item number eight, approve appointment of mayor and city administrator to the Staples Firefighters Relief Association Board of Trustees.
So this is, uh, an item that we do on an annual basis. There's within the Relief Association Board, there's a slot for the mayor and the city administrator.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mary and second by Doug. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carried. Move on to item number nine, consider scheduling a public hearing for January twenty-third for notice to remove hazardous building, uh, two twenty-one Dakota Avenue Southeast.
So basically all we're looking for tonight is, uh, action to schedule a hearing, but, uh, this is a property that we've done, uh, inspections via administrative search warrants, um, under our rental housing code, um, and is out of compliance, no action taken by the property owners. But, uh, so let's start that process, uh, which will do one of two things, either force the, uh, building to be brought into compliance or, um, remove it, so. We've been down this road before.
So when I sign the bills for Hengel, which two bill were, were removed?
That would have been two twelve Wisconsin, which was.
Okay, it said two twenty-one, alright.
I'll make a motion to schedule a public hearing.
Second.
Motion by Doug, second by Mary Jo. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carried. That brings us to committee reports. First committee is Public Works Commission.
So we have to, uh, adopt the cogeneration report. This is a formality, I have to present it to the governing board every year. I don't file it with anybody, but I have to present it to you guys. And cogeneration is something like, uh, uh, a rooftop solar unit or, you know, or a windmill or whatever like that. The only example we have in town is we have one rooftop solar customer. But it, it is a public report, it gives information on where to find, or it gives, uh, it's a report on where to find certain information, um, about our agreements and things like that. And then also provides our retail rate. So like I said, it's a formality, but, uh, if you guys would accept the report, I would appreciate it.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mary and second by Roy to accept the cogeneration report. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
So, uh, we've talked about the Second Street Northeast, um, that was lumped in with what would have been the South Side, you know, the water sewer project. Um, we talked about that we did not get funding for sewer, but we did get funding for water. And so we were gonna delay that project. However, um, the school, they're building that addition and in order for their fire suppression to be acceptable, they need an upgrade in the water main. So, um, in order to do that, we would have to upgrade the water main, um. We would start north of Pleasant Avenue, there's an eight-inch water main going east and west. We would attach to that water main, bring it six hundred feet south to where the school can then hook up to it, uh, and then bring it into the building with their, that's a new service that they've already done. When we do this, the, again, the water portion will still be funded, we've been approved for that, but we'll be on the hook for the sewer. However, there are assessments that, you know, that will go against the property owners and things like that. But based on engineer estimates, um, the project is gonna cost the city, or is, you know, out of our funds, is gonna be a hundred and forty thousand dollars. The commission recommend going, going forward with, with that project, like I said, in the, in the minutes here. If we do not, yeah, thank you, Gerald. If we do not go through with this, the school cannot occupy their new addition.
I just, I just cleared my beautiful line that I just drawed up, drew up there. So, um, on, on the north end of Second Street, um, there's a eight-inch water main, as Scott was saying, that comes across over here, right underneath the parking, you know, the north parking lot. I don't know how to get rid of. Well, anyway, um, you know, so that water main comes across here, it's eight-inch. Uh, what we are proposing is to tie into that eight-inch, uh, do the project down to a manhole in Second Street, which is a logical place to stop on the sanitary sewer. Um, and then their, their, uh, service line, fire service line would come right, you know, north of where that stops.
One thing I forgot to mention too is that, that street has been on our radar for a long time. It's in really poor condition, so, I mean, that's.
And it desperately needs it. We're not just doing it for the school, but it, it's a project we have put on.
And I, you know, I reiterate that the water portion of the project will be funded. It's just that we're on hold for the sewer.
Will be completed as, as, as laid out.
It'll be, you know, it'll be an entire project done a- as we normally would.
Right.
You know, going new services and new street curb gutter.
And where do the funds come from then to pay for that nine forty?
Um, you know, it might be a, a transfer from, from one of the enterprise funds, the electric fund, most likely.
The South Side project that's being pushed back then?
Yeah, we're pursuing, uh, funding on a federal level instead of the state for the wastewater portion. And so we should be able to find out, uh, I think we should be able to get that done in twenty twenty-five as long as we're approved for federal funding that way.
Need a motion for the Second Street Northeast project.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mary and second by Mary Jo.
So that, that Second Street project, that's gonna have a, um, that's gonna be sewer and water?
Yeah.
Okay, cause it only says water.
Oh, yeah, sorry, no, it's, uh, it's gonna be an entire project, just, it's, it's gonna be done as one project, it's just that.
Be sewer, water, curb gutter, tar.
So then that's gonna, that gets assessed then, or what?
Portions of it, yeah. The, the cost of the mains don't, um, because our assessment policy, uh, is a replacement. Um, the city eats that cost, but, um, you know, the, all the curb and gutter and, uh, the concrete, the tubus and service lines. And there's no, in that segment there, other than a, um, a little inlet, um, right up near where the water main is, there's no storm sewer involved in that project up there.
And those assessments then will also offset the hundred and forty? Right?
No.
No.
The, that's, if you take the whole project and then take the assessments, what we're left, the city's portion, and it's based, and it's an estimate from an engineer, so.
So the primary reason to put in the eight-inch main is to service their fire system?
Yeah, for, well, I mean, we, it's a project that we've got on our list and we could, you know, if, if, uh, we had received the funding, it would have been in there anyway. But if we wait until twenty twenty-five to do with the rest, then the school cannot occupy that, that portion of it.
I just, and I just, I'm kinda thinking back to, um, probably before Gerald was, I know it before Gerald was the city administrator, but Stern did an addition onto their building and their water system wasn't, wouldn't, they couldn't service their, uh, fire system. And I, didn't Stern have to pay for that upgrade to the water system to get that so it would, I, I just didn't.
They paid a portion of it, uh, you know, they obviously paid for all of their internal pumps and valves and all the rest of that stuff. But we, we actually applied to the, uh, BDPI, Business Development Public Infrastructure Grant Program, uh, through DED, and I believe we, uh, don't quote me on the numbers, but it seemed to me that we got the, you know, twenty-five thousand dollar grant and then Stern paid twenty-five grand, uh, for, you know, for that, so, uh, there was a cost split.
Yeah, I just, I mean, it was just something I remember from.
Yeah, unfortunately, that program is not available for this type of thing cause it's not a private business that is, uh, um, requesting the upgrade.
But we didn't do the sewer, we didn't get, part of the reason we didn't get the sewer one is because we have our new facility and, and we've, we've done a, a good job of, of managing all that. And so because we haven't done that, it kicked us out of the funding.
Yeah.
Which is a hand scratcher.
Yeah.
Then, too many upgrades in the past, I guess, to.
A big thing that, that they use with that, um, you know, the clean water scoring, scoring sheet, you know, there's a lot of points on that that are lumped into what gets discharged out of your plant. You know, are you in violation of, you know, not meeting certain limits that are set by MPCA? Um, and obviously with our new plant, we're in compliance on all of that. So we didn't, you know, we weren't able to get any points related to the discharge side of it or any kind of violations, um, on that. The only other place where there seems to be a lot of, you know, any substantial amount of points is infiltration into your sanitary sewer system and not hitting those numbers.
So I guess I got one more question on that. That sewer that's being put in, is that to eliminate that one that runs under the building then, or what? Or on Second Street?
No, we'll eliminate the water main.
Okay.
The sewer, we're not worried about cause it's not a pipe under pressure.
Okay.
The, we, we did have a project drawn up, just, you know, like a provisional one, just in case. And it's pretty expensive to go around and, uh,
Right.
If, if we do anything, we'll look at, uh, lining, you know, otherwise we're, we're going, uh, I believe like th- three blocks of.
So this is just to replace with the existing, just to upgrade the existing, okay, I get it, no.
Thank you, for the, for the area that's necessary for occupancy for the school.
Okay.
Yeah, and then if, you know, in twenty twenty-five we get approved, that, that southern half of that street then would, would be added, you know, but just mean that not the whole thing's funded, we, we only, you know, we wanna limit the cost, we can't.
Yeah, so, and I, I, I don't know, Doug, Doug brought up something, I'm not sure if the, if the whole council, um, and everybody else is aware of this, but, uh, the Fourth Avenue alignment, you know, runs on the south side of the community center. If you keep going west, you run into the cafeteria, so I don't encourage you to do that. The road used to go through there and, um, I don't know what year all of that was, when the.
Sixties.
Various segments of the building were built, but, uh, there was, uh, you know, the Fourth Avenue Road right away was vacated and the school built buildings over it and, uh, uh, storm, sanitary sewer and water main are still there. So water was the one that makes everybody nervous because obviously it's under pressure. And if there's a leak, you know, how long does it take to find it and what damage has it done under the buildings by them? So that's what we're proposing is to, you know, disconnect that on both sides, you know, water's under pressure to loop around with existing mains, so.
Alright, we have a, a motion by, uh, Mary and a second by Mary Jo to approve the Second Street Northeast Water Main Project. Um, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Alright, motion carried.
So we also had a proposal to dig up, uh, two blocks of Fourth Street Southwest. And, uh, that is the area that, that is most critical on the south side because of roots penetrating the sewer mains. And, uh, that proposal for digging those two blocks, it, it would cost the city the, around the same amount, around a hundred and forty thousand, you know, give or take, based on the engineering estimates. However, um, the section from Minnesota to Wisconsin, that had been the worst. The guys were able to get through that this year. And, uh, then the section between Wisconsin and Dakota is still bad, but if, if we can jet through it, we can buy ourselves another year and then hopefully get, get funding for the sewer portion and then lump that into one big project. I talked to our street guys, they're the ones that, that do the jetting and, um, based on their recommendation, um, and, and I concur with them that we, we hired Johnson Jetline to try to jet through it again, televise it, see where we're at. If it, if we find that we cannot get through it and it is an emergency, then we spot dig the spots and, um, and just repair to buy us some time as, as opposed to going through the entire project. Yeah, the, I brought that, or made that recommend, the recommendation to the Utilities Commission and they recommended it as well, so.
Is that, is that one of the lines that was just, that was done, what, two years ago or whatever it was when they were, I don't know, they took like twelve yards of trash out of the sewer or something, I don't remember.
We do, we do that, the guys are there multiple times a year. And then we, a couple of years ago, I did have Johnson Jetline do it too, just so I could, I could get a television or, you know, a video of it.
Okay.
So we're recommending again just to see if it's gotten a lot worse, a little worse, or kind of the same.
Okay.
But again, it was this heart mean that we aren't able to do all of it that we want to at one time.
Yeah.
But at least we're gonna do, put a Band-Aid on it for.
Right, that's what we're hoping, or hoping just to buy ourselves a year.
entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Roy, second by Doug. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carried.
And so when do we think that that'll get started?
I, I have them come every year, so it'll be, uh, summer or fall.
Okay.
It, it'll fit in their schedule. We always do a portion of town with them, so, just to, uh, even if we haven't had a problem, we'll send the camera in, you know, so we get, so we know what we're gonna be dealing with in the future. Okay, next item we're seeking action on is, uh, last year we were, we were in a, uh, a cohort, um, with, with multiple utilities from the region, um, looking for the grant, a federal grant, you know, to, uh, increase our resiliency was the, the term that they used. And this year, we did not get selected, our, our big group did not get selected for twenty twenty-three. And so they're applying again in twenty twenty-four and we had said that we were going to, um, join with that group again. However, they changed the requirements for receiving the grant money. And, uh, just for example, if, uh, if, if we wanted a grant for a million dollars, we would have to show that three years previous, we spent a million dollars of our own money on resiliency. We would apply for the grant, we would get half, so we'd get five hundred thousand. And then for the next three years, we'd have to spend a million dollars. So instead of a grant of fifty percent, it becomes a grant of almost twenty-five percent. Um, we have not spent a million dollars the previous three years, we've probably spent more like a hundred thousand. So to apply for a grant that ties us into making improvements and, and the, the, the amount we would receive would be so small, but the project that we would wanna do is so big, we would, it would end up costing us more money than we wanna spend and not to mention if we go through the grant process, you know, we have to have engineers do, you know, be a part of it and, and then we have to report to the federal government for the next three years after we receive it. I think there's a lot of things that, that we can do with, with our own crew and, you know, a boring contractor and things like that, where we'd probably get more bang for our buck. So my recommendation is that we withdraw or. So my recommendation is that we withdraw, or we basically already have, have not joined the twenty-twenty-four cohort, but looking for council approval to not join that, being that we said that we were going to.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Roy, second by Mary Jo. Is there any further discussion?
Is that, is that that generation thing, or what was that?
No, it would be for like, what we're looking to do is to increase the capacity of our northern substation, or, and, you know, like, build out lines so we can attach the north sub to the south sub, you know, loop it, and like I said before, we have two different voltages in town, and most of it is the lower voltage, and we want to, we want to put out the higher voltage, get more of that out, and that's what that project would have done, but we can still do some of that in-house.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
Okay, one, so just, you can see in the Fourth Bolton and the new business, we're offering a program for, it's called smart meter access. Once we get people that are connected to the new smart meters, they can go on a customer portal, and they can kind of look at their usage, they can monitor themselves, and they can set alarms on it, so just something we're adding, just so you're aware. And then I'd sent a message out about a meeting with legislators on Friday, and that, today we found out that that got postponed, so if anybody was planning to attend, it has been postponed, I think everybody's got the message, but.
Have they rescheduled it?
No, it just got postponed today, they're planning on rescheduling, but I will, we'll make sure everybody knows when they do.
Before sessions starts, they hopefully will do that?
Yeah.
All right, did I get Scott?
That's it, yes.
Thank you. Now move us on to open forum. Anyone need to speak on open forum? Now we'll move on to city administrators' report.
That's your lucky day, because I've got a tablet that I'd left on my desk, so I'll go a little bit off memory, but, you know, just as we get twenty-twenty-four rolling here, the projects that we have on the radar that you'll see in action, you know, talk about at the council table, but just kind of off the top of my head, from what I had written down, you know, we've got the Second Street project, which, you know, is still going to be a sizable project and have quite a bit of impact to the residents, to the eight residents on the west side of Second Street up there, but long overdue. We've got that water main replacement on Second Avenue, west of Family Dollar, going out to basically the edge of the overpass, that is the feed to the Essentia Clinic out there. The ARPA project that we got funding from Wadena County out in the industrial park, basically stubbing utilities up into our industrial park area, is slated to move forward here this spring, summer. You know, I know electric with the ongoing installation of AMI meters, water nodes, we hope they come in. And this smart meter thing is going to be a pretty nice feature for customers that want to be able to keep track of what their utilization is, times of day, days of the week, all that kind of stuff. We're hoping that'll also cut down on the, why is my water bill so high? No, I don't have a leaky toilet. Oh, I guess I do, you know, right now, you find out six, you know, up to six weeks after that started, so. Got our airport T-hanger project, and I'm not exactly sure what the timeline will be on that, but that's on the horizon, all the engineering work is, you know, in the, kind of the early to mid-stages, and as we get, I think they were going to give us an eighty percent, ninety percent type review when they get to that point. And, I don't know, what am I missing?
Probably more in the IBS addition.
Oh, yeah, with the Prairie View neighborhood, we'll call it the old Canusa Mobile Home Park up there, but I know that they were actually meeting with the contractors, they got a different contractor lined up to get the garages built up there now, and met with that contractor, they'd drive by, it's like, oh, everything is sitting there, who's going to, you know. So not unusual to have contractor scheduling issues, as we're all familiar with that. So that'll get going, and we would anticipate additional homes coming in in twenty-twenty-four up there.
Is there anybody there with video?
Not that I'm aware of, I guess I didn't ask, I've seen some vehicles there, just fairly recently, not like contractor trucks, but, you know, so I don't know if they have some people in doing, you know, interior finish work, or, you know, that type of thing, but, so.
They sold them?
They are for sale, I haven't, you know, I didn't ask if any of them had been sold, so. And then, you know, obviously, you know, want to congratulate Long Bellas for their many years that they had the store downtown, that's transitioned now, and happened to stop in there last week, it looks pretty nice in there, so. And TCO, TCO, mid-February, on their side of it, so apartments upstairs are nice, I think most of you went on that, went on that tour, so. And Essentia is cruising along now, there seemed to be a little lull in the activity over there over the holidays, but now they've got, starting to get some sheeting, and I see the, you know, their main entry roof line is going up. So stuff happening, so it's going to be another busy year. That's all I have, unless there's questions.
And move there, we adjourn.
Motion by Roy, second by John. We adjourn the meeting, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Meeting adjourned.